Trying to pick our time.
I've got the tendence.
Should be fifteen seconds.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call to order this meeting of the Littleton Planning Commission. This is a study session, January 4th, first day of the new year. I hope everyone's new year has been passing fair for the first four days anyway. Your back is in better shape, I hope.
Much better, seriously.
Okay, Dennis, would you like to call the roll for this?
Chairman McAff.
Here.
Chair Pro Tim Bockenstedt.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mr. Carnado.
Here.
Mr. Itteraria.
Here.
Mr. Newfinkie.
Here.
Mr. Samuelson.
Present.
Mr. Stroopopolis.
Stroopopolis is missing, but we do have a forum. Okay, actually, before we get into the agenda tonight, Tom Christopide had asked for a few minutes to talk about the long discussed planning school. So, Tom?
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
I appreciate your tolerance for a few minutes. And as I look around the room, I'm thinking that there's a lot of good actors here tonight, so I feel even more comfortable with Doug here and with Jan here. Anyway, the Planning Academy that we talked about for a good part of the last year was finally approved by this commission and recommended to council about August. And shortly thereafter, it went to council, and the council set up a committee. The mayor, Tom, Julio, and Dennis. And after some discussion, the general direction seemed to be that the Planning Academy should be sent out to all planning consultants to make proposals or bids on the proposal. And I excuse myself from the committee. But as I understand it, the decision of the committee was to send the planning issue, Planning Academy issue, to Dennis to decide which issues or parts of the Planning Academy would be done in-house and which would be done out-house. And as I think Dennis has told me a few minutes ago, that's still in process. The general format that I had proposed was abbreviated, and the committee saw a plan that started out with a comprehensive plan as a base, then simply went through what I called a planning process: zoning, subdivision, site development, permitting, ultimately leading to a CEO. And personally, my own reaction to that when I saw it was that they don't need me to do that, because the best person to do all of that is sitting right over there. Jan knows the book, frontwards and backwards, and the process, what works and what doesn't work. And if I had to say if that was the thing, I said, I really think the city ought to do the whole thing. That's kind of where I started this conversation. And as you know, I was present for a couple of your infamous or famous Saturday sessions, one of which turned out to be kind of frustrating, to put it politely. And then the second one, since Jim Woods and I think one of the councilmen was here, the second one, Jim came in with Charlie and with Chris and presented a few things to facilitate the Planning Commission's address to a handful of policies that he thought the council really wanted to know, and seems to think that worked pretty well. And I said, well, interesting that maybe the facilitator is an issue that could be pursued. And I'm partly, one part of what I'm doing is pursuing that idea. But the idea was also to incorporate the Planning Academy concept with the planning, pardon me, the comprehensive plan process. And roughly, I said to myself, why don't we have so-called Planning Academy? That it would include one least introduction to the whole idea of planning, what it's all about, what I'd call some overview things, for any public members that wanted to attend, from any area of the city. And then we would simply start in going through the plan, starting on about page 20, which is where the neighborhood goals and policies are, and just go through the neighborhood plans, you know, once every two weeks, or once every month, or whatever it was, and go through those policies as you've been doing. It's good, it's bad, it needs additions, drop it, it's done, whatever the decision may be in regard to the detailed policies, and spend, I'll call it, at least one session on each of those policies. Then with those public comments, excuse me, microphone, with those public comments, come back to the Planning Commission and say, okay, we've discussed the South Park neighborhood, here's what the citizens said, you've got the same thing in front of you, and try to blend those two things together. And to say, well, this is what looks like the best thing now. There may well be additions or deletions or other things, they don't have to be the same, and certainly the commission wouldn't be obliged to take the citizens' comments as given. And then ideally, in my mind, I see that since it's a new year, we could get done before the end of the year. The whole objective would be to be done sometime actually in the latest, in late fall, so that then you could have a draft document of the comprehensive plan. It may or may not be time to begin a formal public review, but you would have had the citizens participating in the plan, not just reviewing it after you've made it. So I thought that might be a better idea, and it might facilitate the work of the Planning Commission as well. Couple of last comments. What I'm talking about, by the way, would not exclude or preclude what I call the formal public hearing for the comprehensive plan during neighborhoods, or it may be. And if this is an idea that makes sense to you, I didn't really bring any written documents, you can see I got some notes, but that's all. If it sounds like an idea, then I'll prepare a proposal and bring it back for your, I'll say, more written review and either recommendation or not. That's it. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Granted, we still haven't decided where we're going after this first section is up, but comments from the commissioners? Questions? Julio?
One of the things you brought up, Tom, is I find to be very interesting, and also kind of, well, I'm concerned about. And I'll just hit it on the head, and that's the facilitator part.
Which part?
Facilitator.
Okay.
I was under the impression we were going to have a facilitator at these meetings. I know that Jim Wood put himself in that position, but I'm looking for consistency, and I, you know, a facilitator can't kind of come and go as they please, they have to be here to do this, and we need that kind of help to get through this process. And I don't know, you know, if it parlay's into what you're talking about, to be quite honest, but I guess I'm quite concerned that when we had a facilitator, we did quite well, or so I thought. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but at least when I felt like we were moving in a direction. I think we have a tendency of, as much as I, you know, I'm as guilty of this as anybody around the table, but, you know, without the focus, we get unfocused real easily, and I think that's a real danger. And we talk like there's all the time in the world, and there really isn't, and that's kind of disappointing to me. I, you know, I see this trying to come to an end in the foreseeable future. I'm not quite sure what's foreseeable anymore, but...
I was just going to say, what's coming to an end?
Well, that's my, you know, it's like the term temporary, what's temporary anymore, you know? So that all being said, I'm very concerned about a couple of things. One, I think that a facilitator would help us. That's number one. Number two, if a facilitator has a planning background, that's just greater points to this thing, because we all come from different backgrounds. We're all good at what we do, but when we're trying to do a plan, I get real concerned that we just kind of, you know, we kind of have a way of, we do a lot of different things than the guys that were doing a con-plan. I guess I'm a little concerned about that, kind of gone all over the place, and it's getting messier and not cleaner in my mind. And I think with that, I'm going to just shut up, because I think that, I could probably go further, but I think it's real important that we kind of stay focused. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but I think that, do I get the impression from you that you are now considering moving away from the Planning Academy and going into something else, or is this still part of the Planning Academy? That's my last and final question.
I still think that the citizens', the forums, as I've called them now, is actually just the Planning Academy in a different perspective. And the whole idea is that instead of creating an agenda, a curriculum, a list of topics, things to talk about and do, and then calling that the Planning Academy. The perspective I have here is that by going through each of these policy questions in, you know, about 10 neighborhoods, as well as some overall comprehensive, that all of the items that we'd be discussing would be brought up in the context of a comprehensive plan, and maybe more meaningful to the citizens, or maybe more meaningful because it's related specifically to their neighborhood, they might be asking questions about that. So I see it as a different kind of Planning Academy, and if you wanted, you could call it a plan-making academy. Which, you know, I mean, one of the things you've talked about a lot in the last year is how do we get the citizens involved? So this is another aspect of that. Once a month with this planner, you know, I've got a big, long planning background, so I'd be very comfortable doing that. What you don't know about me is that I spent 10 years as a teacher in the industrial and commercial world, so I'm pretty comfortable with the, I'll call it, the whole planning teaching process.
It sounds, Tom, like you're talking less of a Planning Academy, a different type of public outreach for the rest of the company.
Well, I think it is both outreach and, what do you want to call it, feedback, so it works both ways, and it's really, I think of it as kind of alternating current.
Other questions, Nor?
Yes. What I don't understand, and perhaps you or the planning department could sort out, maybe I need a visual flow chart, but you're going to have whatever proposals from the planners brings forth as something along the line of a Planning Academy, if I understand correctly. Going to have what you proposed, which may include a facilitator, and I'll agree with Julio, what he was saying, and then you have a Planning Commission. So maybe something along the line of a flow chart that shows input here, feedback there, positionally, where those three occur. Because I think there's, it would have been valuable to me, some form of a Planning Academy or a forum before being a member of the Planning Commission. I think that would be a place people could, citizens could get involved. Then I guess I'm not sure, again, the facilitator, good idea, how do all those link up? And maybe not necessarily entirely sorted out tonight, but that would be something that would help me understand.
Here's the Planning Academy, citizens forum, out there, there's a dozen policies. Review and discuss all those policies. Then you take this and bring it over to the Planning Commission. Here's a dozen recommendations, the results, this has been revised, you know, by the Planning Commission. Say, here's what they said. Make a final decision. And it comes in, all these policies, this, and it's all done. You have to put together and expect this. All right, what we got? And maybe add the overall thing. When the con-plan goes together, it's the overall thing, and then work into the decision. Maybe you want to go to the other one? Is that what you were talking about, Nor?
To some extent. I guess in what you drew out there, what I see is you're Planning Academy doing a lot of the legwork and so on that we've been doing, and then Planning Commission is almost executive committee for the con-plan, distilling and ruminating over what comes forward. And I guess unless you have council appointing the Planning Academy and offering direction, maybe that doesn't fit into the current arrangement that well. I have more questions about the interaction. I wasn't particularly making a suggestion, I was asking for enlightenment, and I see what you have.
Well, I hope that clarifies a little bit on what I see. And I think it's possible that that may or may not preclude, I'll call it, the current Planning Academy that Dennis is working. So that if there is need for a Planning Academy alternative that says, this is how the process, the planning process works, you know, that's certainly valid, and it doesn't exclude. It's possible that in the course of that event, or pardon me, of those forums, you know, that the processing might come up over and over, because, you know, what's the single thing that most citizens are concerned with when you hear planning? It's probably zoning battle. And that's always, you know, an issue. But they really aren't very familiar, more often than not, with, you know, the things that follow up from that, and sometimes they certainly aren't familiar with the things that go before. It's the zoning battle that comes up, like the top part of an iceberg, all of the real work has been done underneath.
I see that the Planning Commission really needs to be at the forefront of the neighborhood input and really be proactive with getting the input on that level. And all of us, I think, kind of need to be there to be able to hear the opinions, to be able to represent them down the line. So I...
I like the idea of the sort of grassroots effort. I do question the concurrent running of planning. Yes. I guess when you were originally describing it, Tom, I was thinking perhaps it would be open to Planning Commission orders as well, their participate or attend at least. I'm thinking now that maybe even help establish direction for the Planning Academy. Say?
See, Craig, in the discussions about the Planning Academy of last year, the '09 Planning Academy, there was some discussion about having some of those first, especially early classes. Or the council and the commission. The way I see this, I don't see any reason why anybody, anybody in town, most of you are, can come, councilman, commissioner, cop, teacher, doesn't matter. So I think, like other, you know, public meeting groups in the city.
You know, in our recent meetings toward the end of last year, one of the things we addressed was not just the need to bring this first segment, central area, to a conclusion for public comment, council consideration. But we also said that we're going to have to start looking ahead, we can't wait until that is wrapped up before we decide how we're going to proceed with the rest of the con-plan. So what it sounds like you're talking about, Tom, is consideration of a variation on how we handle public outreach first segment. That's something we think about. But I think it's something we need to be thinking about over the next couple of months as we wrap up this first section. So we're prepared for moving on beyond that.
Okay. Thank you.
You.
Do you have any recommendations you want? Want anything else from me? Just want to think about it. Like, pardon me?
Thank you. I don't know if we have any in the moment.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask Tom for at least an outline of what he's ending consideration.
Are you a second?
Second, Dan. Yes, an outline, or like I was saying, sort of a flow chart. I'm still looking for an integration between what you propose and what might come out of the committee and Planning Academy and what our function or formal interaction. Something like that.
It almost sounds like we're talking about, we're starting to talk about three different things. There's the Planning Academy that Dennis is working on for action of the city council, there's the public outreach portion of the con-plan development that we've been headed towards for the last 12 months, and now there's this kind of in-between. So, yeah, I think putting something down in black and white, Tom, would help give us a little clarity, so we know whether it's either or or neither.
Okay, because I was under the general impression, frankly, that the Academy was, nothing happened three months.
No, no, it's definitely alive, it just, we've been going back and forth in terms of, you know, how to handle it, how much staff time could be assigned to it, and we're kind of at the point where I think we're looking at a consultant doing, you know, almost all that work.
Just that the original, originally the idea of Planning Academy was to create an awareness familiarity among interested citizens in the whole planning, zoning, development process, not just a specific neighborhood or the con-plan itself. And then now it sounds like we're kind of merging the two together. If we're going to consider that, that's fine, that's something we have to consider in moving on to the next section, so we need to be doing this in the next couple of months.
Okay, I'll try to...
Just to follow up, I think, you know, to get my support on that, I'd have to understand how they build upon each other, they're not working at odds or drawing people away from it, perhaps you kind of support together.
Okay, I'll get out my mental synthesizer, see if I can make some music.
Okay, anything else? Other comments? Okay, the motion on the floor is to ask Tom to put this down in black and white so we know how it fits in with our plans coming up in the next, this first quarter of the year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, I'll be back. Okay, picking up from our last special meeting at the end of the year, where we're specifically addressing the R5 sub-area within the central area. Two major topics that we, or facets of that we had discussed, one was in the interest of maintaining the small-town character for that residential area of Littleton, what should we do about limitations on developments through the PDO process? Dennis has summarized a lot of that discussion. I know that Dick has done a little background work, because we had some questions about what the possible consequences of some of the decisions we discussed at the last meeting might be. Dennis, do you think, Dennis, would, Dick want to summarize a few of the items?
Actually, yeah, let me go through first and just kind of say what I've handed out, and then kind of what, just get confirmation in terms of what I put down here, if that's all right, and then Dick will go through his testing.
Given our discussion at the last meeting where we hadn't gotten, everybody in the commission hadn't gotten all the materials, has everyone seen the stuff that Civitas generated?
Thanks. First of all, what we have is, have a lengthy agenda, I went through and annotated the agenda, so we've got all the information we're going to need is on the agenda. And then meeting notes from the last meeting, including some responses to some of the questions we had last meeting included in the meeting notes, so we kind of have some of the details. And then, third thing is the section out of the design standards and guidelines, which talk about the existing character and desired character for the R5 area, which I thought was kind of interesting background in terms of, we're all on that same track and how these all fit together. And then the fourth thing is the testing that Dick's been doing for us, going through and saying, okay, if these are the assumptions for the R5 and the two motions that were passed last time, what are the possible implications of that? Knowing that we want to have the goal of trying to retain the small-town character and at the same time allow the area to be developed and not kill the market in the area. So he was looking at, you know, how feasible is this? Is it too stringent, are there other ways to meet that same goal? So he goes through the first page, which was the agenda, this is my take, to maintain the small-town character that is unique to Littleton was pretty much what we set, I think, the goal for the R5 itself, not to protect individual houses. And then we talked about elements, and we didn't all agree on these things, but these are things I heard, in terms of what's defining that character, the small-town character in the R5 area, the size of the structures, the length of individual structures along the street, the height of those structures, the percentage of a site that is unobstructed open space. Question from the study that Dick has done, said, looking at the curb cuts, it's something we didn't talk about, but in terms of character and small-town character, we started to look at redevelopment, how many curb cuts should we have, how long should they be, and still maintain that kind of sense of pedestrian comfort and the tree lawns that are there? And the second question that's come out of the question is, is the tree lawns themselves, do we actually have provision for detached sidewalks, attached sidewalks, what is the kind of design question for that? And there are other questions, I think, that Dick will come up with that came out of that. The boundaries, we decide to remain, they should remain as they are currently configured. The lot size, there was a motion that said there will be maximum size of .5 acres, 21,780 square feet, and that's the basic information that Dick was working with, height, that there'd be no exception to the maximum height of 30 feet, granted through the PDO process. And second, open space, no exception to the minimum open space requirement of 25% be granted through the PDO process. Given that, Dick went through and looked at a couple alternatives. I've actually got two more that he's done, I'll hand, I'll send around. You should be getting test five, the test five A. He got through and decided there were some additional things that it'd be good to look at, so. So given that, Jan is here too to answer questions in terms of the zoning and process, and Dick, of course, is here, and he could be here as long as we need him to be, so make sure you use both of them as resources for us, because they have tremendous, you know, background on this stuff, so.
Okay, and start the slide.
Start talking about what your tests are, and everybody does have those in front of them. So again, this is the study area, north is to the right, north is to the left, excuse me in this one, so. And Jan and Dick worked on this together, go through and figure out the lot size of all the individual lots. The lots are colored in, are those that could be assembled up to a half acre maximum, and the ones that are white are the ones that are kind of the leftover parcels that Dick was looking at, so. Dick, I'll let you take it.
Yeah, let me start with this, which is kind of a packing exercise. You've got a number of parcels. The goal is to limit the assemblage of parcels to a half acre. Many of the parcels, particularly the ones that are on the west side, next to South Santa Fe, really can't be assembled into a half acre or less assemblage, because they're just a little bit too big. A half acre is like 21,000... A half acre is like 21,000, help me out here, 21,000 something, 300 or 200, something like that.
780.
780, okay. So, you know, you just, these two would be assembled, that would wind up over a half acre. These would be, if they were trying to assemble these two, it'd be over a half an acre, these would be over a half acre. You know, you can take, for instance, these alley-loaded parcels that are roughly 6,200 square feet, you can assemble three of those to make something that's close to a half acre, like .4 or so. You could do that for this one, this one, and this one. You can do that there. These could be assembled, these three could be assembled into something that's less than a half acre. That could be assembled into something that's less than a half acre. And similarly, these two could be assembled, these three. But you, when you do that, you wind up with, at the very least, these guys that are sort of left out. You could potentially assemble these two and these two and these two, you'd still have one left out. You know, there's a, there's a, it's like a little Rubik's Cube kind of thing. As you assemble these things, you could, you might change the amount, number of parcels that are left out by one or two, but you're somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to 10 parcels. And what's interesting about that is that some of these parcels are pretty darn big. They add up to about 30% of the land area of the R5 that simply can't be assembled to create a five acre or less assemblage. To me, that means that, that they, particularly the ones that are long and skinny, have a, have less opportunity to achieve anywhere near the kind of densities that you're, you know, that you might even be looking for. Let's say right now it's of, what, 43 and a half deuse per acre is the maximum density you can have in here. The half acre development, I thought, when I listened to the last time we were talking about it, was shooting for something in the, you know, sort of 15 unit per acre range as a, as sort of a goal, which is, you know, more than half a reduction in terms of the amount of density that you actually could get. Now, you know, what you can actually get is probably not often achievable. But even with that, as I say, you're shooting for 15 units per acre, these singletons are not going to get anywhere near that in terms of the number of units and things like that. So, I think that that's one issue about the half acre limit, is that there are going to be a substantial number of parcels, a substantial land area, that are not going to be able to take advantage of being assembled at all. They're just gonna have to be left out of the equation. I studied a chunk like that on the, on the west side because the, there's a substantial change in grade that affects these parcels. So, my first thought was that the change in grade would, could be a detriment in developing these parcels, and if you had the half acre limit, then that might be a further detriment. And so, I looked at this, the, the ones on the, you know, a couple on the, on the west side, and it turned out, surprising to me, it turned out that you, that the grade actually works, the depth and the grade of the lots actually works to their benefit in the sense that you can get a double layer of units in those, on those sites. One, one layer of townhouses at the, at the upper end and one layer that's sort of halfway down. And then you can tuck the parking in into a little parking court in the center of these things, I think. So, that's what, at least a study that, that I did on test one indicated to me is that you could, with a single curb cut off of Curtis, you could serve, what, seven townhouses with an internal parking court. I've asked whether there are sort of fire department issues here, I think as long as we're within, we can touch the, the further row of townhouses further down the slope, within 150 foot radius, we might be okay, as long as they're sprinkled and things like that, which are often the case. So, that surprised me. I thought that, that was potentially a good omen, that, you know, you could start here at the upper level, tuck in the parking on the backside of the townhouses on the, on the front. These townhouses could be roughly 25, 26 feet wide with two car parking garages on the, on their, on their backside, and then you could then have what essentially is tandem parking for the units that are on the further west side. One parking space within the garage and then one that's outside on the, on the driveway. The parking requirement is 1.5 spaces per, per unit, so you can't really get away with just one space per, per townhouse in these cases. So, that's why I thought that you could probably do this, have a skinnier townhouse and still beat the, the parking requirements. This also allows, with this parking court in the middle, this allows for these units to have really good views to the west and also has a good presentation of the neighborhood and the city and the development from South Santa Fe, so you don't have to look at the, say, the garaging or the service side of a building, that these buildings can in fact be quite handsome from South Santa Fe. So, also, I think that there, to me, there was a, I was, I was a little confused at how to figure the, the height limit on this because of the way that the height limit is defined in the ordinance. It says that it is either 30 feet from the highest point of the site or it's 30 feet from the lowest part of the site, whichever is greater. But I think that there's, if I, I'm trying to remember the wording, it seems like if you took the higher end of the site as your, as the maximum, there's something about that, I'm trying to remember the wording, that canceled that out as well. So, it sounded like, if you read that carefully, that the, really the only way that you could get the height limit to work on this, that the height limit was really working from the lower end of the site rather than the higher end of the site. And that was because, I think, the height limit assumed that the maximum fall across the site was 10 feet. If it was more than 10 feet, in this case it's 20 feet, then the way that the height limit is, the definition is, is written, the, the upper height doesn't count. So, I think that there's maybe a little bit of massaging here and hopefully some.
This ought to be a fairly straightforward question for staff to answer, because it's not like we haven't had developments on the sites. So, what is this?
I'm gonna turn that over to Jan, so she's got, she's got the cheat sheet here, okay?
I never can understand. I always have to go to the building official to explain it to me. It's gotta do with the grade. The code in case, grade, that grade is the lowest point of elevation in your surface of the ground, the area between the building and property line, where the property line is 5 feet, the building, building.
This one's always surprised me too, because a lot of jurisdictions have ways to figure this, it seems a lot simpler than this, so this is the one we've been using.
Yeah, this is the.
But we certainly have developed sites that have, you know, some fairly substantial grade to them, so.
Well, in any event, this only works if you're able to measure the height limit off of the higher end of the site. If you measure it off the lower end of the site, then these townhouses don't make any sense. Mostly the tuck-under townhouse type requires three floors. You have to have the garage floor with an entry and maybe a spare room at that level, the garage level, and then a second level, which is really your living and dining area, and a third level, which is bedroom or some mixture of those, and you can obviously mix that. But there's really no way to get around essentially three levels. In this case, you can get kind of like two and a half levels out of this because the grade can settle this back down. But typically, if the grade was flat, it's a three-level thing. The, in some of my studies, I took the existing zoning allowance for having greater setbacks, particularly the side yard setbacks, to give you more than 30 feet. You know, for every foot of additional setback, you get an additional foot of height. I think that the thing about a three-story townhouse or a three-story anything for that matter, with tuck-under parking, which gets the parking out of the equation, it's not a big surface lot, it's, it's a, it's a garaging kind of thing. The three, the 30 feet is going to probably force you into a lot of flat roofs. You're not gonna have a lot of room there to do pitch roofs. And maybe you can do some pitch roofs, and I've tried to show pitch roofs wherever I could, but they really require at least 35 feet to get a decent pitch roof.
The design guidelines for this neighborhood particularly talk about using pitch roofs to try and replicate the existing character.
Right.
So, we're really trying to kind of show what was there, pitch roof is certainly more appropriate. I think Hill Street Commons is an example, they're 40 feet, and even at that, they've got a fairly low pitch on their roof, so, in order to get that and maintain the character.
Right. Of course, that doesn't have anything to do with, you know, the limit of a half an acre in terms of site, but it, it is a sort of interesting sort of finding, sort of a little aha that I, that struck me once I started doing these things. So, the, I think in terms of the, of the west of Curtis, there's sort of a good news to that in the sense that you can get a pretty nice development over that. You can get the densities that are in the neighborhood of 14 units per acre, 14, 15 units, you know, somewhere in the middle of, middle range. It looks like it'd be developable, it looks like you could, you can not, you don't have to chew up the, the front edge of the development with driveways and curb cuts. You know, right now, you don't really notice the curb cuts on street-served properties because they're all single-family residences, and some of those are pretty good-sized widths. So, you get, at, at, at worst, you get a driveway maybe every 40 or 50 feet, which doesn't really, doesn't, doesn't sort of dissolve the tree lawn and the sidewalk into a big puddle of, of concrete. But once you start getting, you know, townhouses and, and/or above small apartments, then you've got to start worrying about the number of curb cuts that serves the parking. When you've got an alley-served parcel or a series of parcels, which you've got a few of them, then that's not as serious, that's not a problem because you can get it all off the alley. But, you know, roughly two-thirds of, maybe three-quarters of the, of the lots in this area are street-served, they're not alley-served. So, we have that, that additional issue.
So, Dick, what you're saying is if, if this didn't have the ability to have units back behind or access behind, each one of those units would end up with, with a driveway, a fairly wide driveway, probably a two-car driveway coming into, so it has all concrete all along the front.
See, this is your only driveway right here, going back into this sort of car court. Okay, let's go on to test two. This is essentially the same lot, but asking the question, can you, can you get a, you know, kind of a podium, a little podium sort of development on top of this? In other words, can you get apartments onto this lot as opposed to townhouses? And again, I was surprised to find that you probably could if you, for instance, had all of this stuff sitting on top of a garage, that's sort of half in and half out of the, out of the site, that because of the fall of the site and the depth of the lot, you could literally drive down the length of the lot and come into a, essentially a one-level parking structure that dead-ends back in the, into the, into the width or the depth of the site at the high end. And then on the top, you could have a, a little garden court development sitting on top that. It is, it can be done very nicely and it can be done horribly, but you, I think you can do that within the setbacks and within the height limits. Again, the height limit only works if it works off of the upper end. The lower end doesn't make any sense because this, this is, this is not a cheap solution. And, you know, you get 20 apartments on this, on this development, so you need to have roughly 30 parking spaces, which you can get underneath this thing. But, you know, 30 parking spaces, a lot of parking spaces. In this case, it's, it's fairly concealed, but at this end, at the, the end next to South Santa Fe, you're going to see at least the lower end of this parking structure, you know, it has to be treated somehow rather.
So, Dick, you've got two and three stories on this of stacked flats, is there?
Yeah, you can, basically what I said, I was thinking, rather than having any sort of, sort of corridor or exterior corridor motel kind of feel to it, that you would just simply have four stair cores with two units off of each stair core and a couple of these stair cores going down into the parking structure for fire access. And then have three stories at this end and two stories here, so you can step down and some of these units on the upper level here could have some views out over the top of the other units.
So, much higher density on this, it's up to 41 units per acre.
Yeah, actually, this could, this could push the 43 and a half units per acre.
And where are you getting your open space on this? Primarily in the back and then also in the front setback?
Well, again, surprisingly, 25% is pretty easy to get. It doesn't, it doesn't include driveways or, or surface parking. But, you know, there's a fair amount here, you know, you start counting all of this stuff, you can count the inside on the deck, and there's a, you know, there's a fair amount out in here as well. So, you know, I got 27% without counting the interior. But this is going to be a flat-roofed building probably in order to get these kinds of, you know, the three stories of, of units. Okay, let's, let's do another test. This is an alley-served assemblage of three lots that is off of, on the other side of Curtis, down at the intersection of Curtis and West Berry. And again, I was thinking of trying to take, try to take advantage of the depth of the lot with parking in the rear and to have a series of really skinny townhouses to try to maximize the, the density. So, again, this is tandem parking.
So, so Curtis is to the bottom.
Right.
Alley's to the top.
Right, alley's to the top, West Berry is over here. You get two parking spaces in tandem on the ground floor. You get a, a little entry space here that could be live-work, you could have, you know, a home office, you could have a spare bedroom, it could be a little workroom, you know, whatever, but you can have that out in front. The entry comes in here, the stairs go up to the second level, which is living, dining, then the third level is, is bedrooms. And again, it, it has a, a section like that. I try to push it to 33 feet by increasing the setbacks on the sides, front and rear, you can increase the setbacks by three feet or so either side. Gives you enough, maybe enough space to at least get a shed roof on the, on the front, you know, I could break it or whatever, but it gives you a little bit more space to do a shed roof, but not a lot. roof, but not a lot. And this is, these are the sidewalks out to the street, these are the front yards. I broke it here so you could get to the front of the back. In the back, there's, there's no, there's no entry to the unit other than coming into the garage and up the, into the front lobby of the unit and then upstairs. The main entry to the unit is off the, off the front. So that allows you to have perhaps a little bit of landscaping in between the driveways in the back.
How wide are these units?
Uh, they're about 16 feet, 15 to 16 feet. So you get, you get a little bit wider foyer here, you get this, you know, sort of extra space in the ground level, whatever you want to use that, 10-foot garage, four-foot stairs, you know, straight front stair up to the, up to the next level. So, well, we've got, what, 23 units per acre on that? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
With me, yeah.
We got eight, we got eight units. I made a mistake here, I really tried to pack it in and get nine, and then I sort of said, well, I better not do that, I'll try to back it off a little bit, get this breakthrough here. So I got eight units on here instead of nine, and the units per acre is roughly 20 units per acre.
Dick, what's the approximate square footage per unit?
Oh, maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of 1500 to 1700 square feet. You know, I use, we've got a lot of, we collect building types and stuff like that at the office, and so I tend to use some of these things and then modify them in ways that make them, might work for these sites a little bit better or whatever. But there's plenty of ways in which you can get townhouses on here, but probably not as, not any ways that you can get any more townhouses than what I'm showing. You could get six or five townhouses on here.
Maybe this is a good time to explain to those who are looking at all. What we were looking for was an illustration of consequence of the decisions we discussed at the last meeting. What would happen within the R5 setup if we limited any assemblage of developed lots to a half-acre site? What would be the result if we insisted on holding to the 30-foot height? What kinds of density could we see? What kinds of massing buildings could we see for somebody who wanted to put that maximum half-acre lot together for development purposes? So this is illustration to us, consequence of the decisions. This is by no means a plan or a suggestion.
Right, right, right.
I thought we've gone far enough along it would be helpful for them to understand that.
Probably pretty scary to see some of these things. I'm not recommending that. On the other hand, I think that in the back of my head was that if you had a limitation of five acres, and many of these lots are, assemblages are less than that, they're like 4.4 acres or so forth, and you've got a zone district that says that you can go a lot higher in densities, that my thought was that a developer may want to push the envelope as much as he can within the half-acre limitation.
And still be marketable?
Still be marketable, you know, whether the unit is, whether these units are marketable or not is anybody's question. Bigger units might be more marketable, densities that are lower could be more marketable. But my notion was, well, let's push the envelope and see how many units you can get on there, given the fact that you have a limitation of a half-acre. One more before we go. This is the, this is Curtis, this is the tree lawn, the street, where you have the street trees and the sidewalk. And so you have a series of just sidewalks coming out of the townhouses to, with, you know, front yard landscaping in between them.
No curb cuts?
No curb cuts on the street.
Everything on the alley.
So all alley-served, so that's the beauty of an alley, is that you can, you can hide all of that, all of the paving back there. On the same lot, I thought, well, let's see if we can do a small apartment building or something that's not townhouses. And this, this is really three little stair-served apartments. This gets, let's see, this one gets, these get three units in these two, and this one gets six units in this one. This one's three stories tall, and these are two stories tall with, I'm sorry, they're all three stories tall. This is three, three, no, I'm sorry, this is two, three, two, and then this has tuck-under parking in all of them on the backside. And again, using the driveways as another, another way of stacking tandem parking to meet the 1.5 spaces per unit. Essentially, this is almost like a little parking lot back here. Each unit has the ability to have two spaces, but they're, again, they're tandem.
And for purposes of definition, apartment has kind of shared access, whereas a townhouse will have direct access to individual units?
Right, right, right. You know, for instance, these, these units have a shared stair, these have a double stair that gets you up to the second unit that laps over the top. So they're, they're essentially flats. The people who live above you are not your family, it's Tony Els's family. And again, in order to try to get some sloping roof in this within, say, 35 feet, which, you know, trying to get the setbacks in addition to the required setbacks to give that extra height, gets you up around 35 feet. So it's possible to do a little, a little apartment building, and you can break it up and make the architecture sort of reasonable. This could be, again, this is lower, higher, lower, a lot of variation in the front.
Basically, the same massing, almost, you've got the same height, but much higher density and much higher open space percentage on this one than you had on the last couple?
Yeah, the, well, the open space is probably...
Up to 43%.
43%. Yeah, that's because of the additional, the fact that you can tighten this up a little bit, get more space on the sides and to the front.
What kind of square footage per unit on those?
Dennis, could you give me my, let's see, what is it, where is my thing? You know, some of these are like, these are like 1,170 square feet. You know, these little guys here are like 750 square feet.
Fairly standard for an apartment, kind of fairly similar to Alexa, I think, Jan, is probably the square footage.
Yeah, many of them are, they're mostly one-bedrooms. They vary in terms of how much living space you've got. But, you know, again, this is not architecture, I'm not trying to sell you on apartment buildings, but I wanted to see whether apartment building could work on a half-acre, roughly a half-acre site, and I think it can. But again, without some height, loosening of the height, it's going to be a flat roof These I did today to try to figure out, well, what happens with the street-served parcels? This is a assemblage of three parcels up on Nevada near Crestline, with the corner parcel left alone, the next three parcels assembled into, into a roughly 18,750-square-foot parcel, roughly 43, 0.43 acres. 125 by 150, I think, is roughly the parcel, it's 150 feet long. So if you were to try to max out the number of townhouses on this, on this parcel, you'd literally take some of the, you know, the types I've been looking at and flipping them. You would have, you know, a 16-foot wide townhouse with tandem parking with its own drive, little entry stair up with a six-foot sidewalk here. And you'd just repeat that right on down, with the exception, you could probably combine a couple here and repeat that on down, so that everybody has their own sidewalk and their own, their own driveway. That essentially produces almost a continuous curb cut for every, these four townhouses here, a little bit of a break, another curb cut, continuous curb cut all the way down here, which is not good. It's not, it's not good for the street, it's not good for the pedestrian part of it, it's not, not good for the fact that, you know, the front yard setback is really all concrete with, you know, potentially some, you know, I might be able to get some pots out there.
Part of that discussion, I think, Paulus initiated last time, which was, a lot of the character of the older neighborhoods is the fact that there's a sense of open space. It's green, there's grass, there's yard, and if you end up with all concrete, all parking lot.
Well, you get great backyards. Every one of these things gets great backyards because there's no alley back here, you can't access this stuff back here. Everybody gets their terrific, terrific backyard. It's a very, it's a very private kind of development. So there's a lot of product here. Somebody could have a great backyard, you know, parking for two cars.
People see driving down the street or walking down the street is very different character than that.
Well, you sort of sacrifice the public, the public side of this, and you maximize the private side, whereas, you know, when you have an alley-served kind of condition with these sort of townhouses, it's the reverse. You maintain the public side and the, and the backside is all parking.
So in order to preserve the front side, we would need to give curb-cut limitations?
Yeah, I think so. Now, I did a variation of this, which is just simply handing these things differently. Because this is, this is obviously clearly a worst-case condition. If you handed these things so that you shared the drive for the tandem, so you wind up with four drives at roughly 20 feet wide, with zones, about 12-foot wide zones in between, with a four-foot sidewalk, you might be able to get enough landscaping in there to have a couple of small, you know, columnar trees. The curb cuts, you get four curb cuts across here, maybe there's wide enough in here to get street trees, but you still wind up with four curb cuts, in this case, across a 150-foot...
And there were three lots to begin with.
There were three lots to begin with.
So you had four curb cuts across three lots instead of the three that arguably you had now.
Right. Now, if these were, let's say, these were not, I thought, well, maybe it would even be a better condition if these were just straightforward townhouses with two, two-car garages side by side, parking. In other words, a townhouse would be 25 or 26 feet wide. But then I think that you might wind up with, with five townhouses in here, because you've got roughly 135 feet to play with, again, with five curb cuts and driveways 20 feet wide. So you wind up with even a worse condition with the more typical townhouse with lesser, less density. With five townhouses, you might chew up this even more than what you've got here with eight townhouses.
And typically, I think the existing character is you have, probably have a single car garage and maybe a single-lane driveway going into it. Rarely do you have a double, a wide driveway, I think, going into an older house, older neighborhood.
Some don't even have that.
Don't even have that, exactly.
Right, right.
Whereas, new product, you're going to get, you know, a much wider driveway typically, to feel differently, I think. Whereas this feels like a new product to me, like a new development.
How wide are these three lots together?
150 feet, three 50-foot lots, roughly.
Those long, skinny ones on the west side of Curtis?
They, I think that they were in the neighborhood of 50 feet, but they went back 175 feet or something like that, or maybe two.
The two width-wise would be about 100?
Yeah.
Hey, Dick, I have a question on that. Can you go back to that?
The last one?
Is there enough room in the back of the lots to push all of that back 10 or 15 feet, put one curb cut in the center, the cars could come in the center and go down in front of those units, and then put monumentation along the street?
Yeah, you could do that. You could, you could, you could push it back.
Do it all out of court in front?
Yeah, so you push everything back and then they...
But I think that the...
...maybe two.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think you wind up with two curb cuts, not one. And what you, what you then have is you have, you don't really break these things up all the way across, all the way back to the unit. You sort of isolate the front doors from the sidewalk because you now have a continuous drive in front of them. It's certainly possible, and it might be, you might wind up with more landscaping right here, but I'm, I think it's kind of six of one, half dozen of the other, I'm not sure it's a real improvement.
Well, if you wanted to make it a walkable area, wouldn't that be limiting the curb cuts?
It'd be limiting the curb cuts, but then you would, you would also be limiting the, the direct pedestrian access to the front doors, because you'd have a drive all the way across here, the front doors would be back in here, all this stuff would be pushed back. You'd have a drive all the way across here, you have the front doors in here, and you would have to cross the drive lane in order to get to the front doors. It's possible, you know, you can, you can mark the crossings of the drive lane with special paving and things like that.
So Dick, given what the goal was and your analysis here, what, what's your thought in terms of, if that's the goal and those are the subalances of that?
Right, right.
Does this meet it? Does it cause too many problems? And Steve's here too, and I know Steve's got some ideas on this as well.
Oh, good. Well, and I guess when I summarize this, is that you can, you, I think that there may be a more of a tendency to try to pack a lot of things into the, into the smaller half-acre because you, that's the maximum amount of development you've got. I'm just worried that there's still some unintended consequences that comes out of limiting it to half-acre. If you were to simply try to give some parameters to the length of a building, the number of curb cuts, the gap between buildings, and not worry about whether or not they're on half-acre or three-quarters of an acre or, or, you know, whatever, you might be directing, you might be more directed to what you want to achieve. The one, the one advantage, I think, that you might have with, with half-acre limitations is that you're forcing, probably forcing more independent developers, independent builders to, to create stuff. So there may be more variety because of that. Again, I think you could probably address the variety through design standards fairly well without the half-acre limitation. To me, there's still, I still worry about the half-acre limitation just because of the number of singletons that are out there. the number of singletons that are out there that can't take advantage of, of any assemblage. The fact that, that's the, the little study that we did at the beginning of this thing, of combinations, that's the best-case condition, you know? What happens if somebody doesn't want to sell their property? You know, what happens if, you know, there are already two or three, there are three commercial properties in there, office properties, they're not gonna probably want to aggregate. So I'm, I'm just worried that there's, there's a, potentially unintended consequences with that.
One of the things Curtis brought up is just, you know, do we get so restrictive that it kind of kills the market? It sounds like, you know, because this is limited enough in terms of how you assemble these, if you've got a couple holdouts, you don't get those assemblages, which may, you know, be curse fear there, I think.
Right, right. Well, all I, you know, and what I've done here is, is assuming that there is a market to do this stuff. There may be a market to do two or three apartment buildings, but there may not be market to do one apartment building. There may be market to do, you know, 12 townhouses, but not market to do four or six. So, I don't know. I, I, you know, for what it's worth, you can do stuff on these, on half-acre or less parcels, but you still have 30% at best case of the R5 that you, you can't assemble into half-acre lots.
Dick, we didn't ask you to consider this, but I'm gonna ask the question. If you didn't have a half-acre parcel limitation, does opening it up to one or two acres give them more flexibility as far as massing or arrangement of the, of the units, access to parking, that sort of thing? Or does it not really matter, it's really more a question of the configuration of the lots as they're existing?
Well, I tend to, I've always favored the idea that there are, that you can control this or manipulate this with design standards to get more of what you really want, and then not worry about limiting the, the parcel size. If you went to, say, three-quarters of an acre instead of a half-acre, well, you could maybe get a little bit more into the situation. If you do, went to half, a full acre, then maybe so, I don't know. But somehow, once you get past a certain limit, then, I'm not sure it makes any sense then to, to limit. For instance, this, this little guy right here, that I think would be tough to develop in, in a half-acre conditions, particularly if you wanted to limit the, the curb cuts. It's, it's, you know, the parcel shapes are working to do sort of odd things as well.
Some of the criteria that we heard in the earlier discussion, the, the last couple meetings, were that the neighborhood should look as if it evolved over time, that it had different developers and different timeframes to it, different size, different scale of projects, and you're thinking you can do that through design guidelines, true?
Well, maybe, you know, I, I keep an open mind on it, but the unintended consequences part of it kind of worries me.
Is the Nevada place, the east part of Nevada, is that about one acre?
Uh, where, up here?
Yeah, that one you're pointing at?
Yeah, probably.
And the bottom would be just over an acre?
Yeah, I haven't calculated. That, that could be close to an acre, and this is over an acre. This may be like .8 or .9 of an acre, this might be.
I'm, I'm looking at the size of the lots right below it.
Right.
636, yeah, so plus, yeah, 38, 39,000, it's a little less than, right there. And the one to the east would be a little bit smaller. So if you were to look at design guidelines, what would, what would the elements of the design guidelines be? The maximum length of the product, the, the design of the product itself, and getting variety in there?
Well, maximum length curb cuts, gaps between or, between buildings, ways to encourage variety, you know, things like that. And I, and I, and I think that the 30-foot height limit is, is an issue if you want to have three-story buildings. And I think three-story buildings are the ones that get you the tuck-under parking. If you go to two-story buildings, then it's going to be surface parking, and they're, they're going to be, you know, that works off an alley, but it sure, sure as heck doesn't work off the street.
So if you go to 40 feet, maybe, or 45, or...
Well, I don't know. I think 40 feet is probably a decent number for...
Again, 40 is what Hill Street Commons is, which is two and a half stories with a fairly low pitch.
How high is Nevada Place?
Well, it goes into 43, 44 feet, I think.
42, it says here.
Yeah, and it's three and a half stories. Steve, did you have thoughts on this, too?
Just jumping on my height limits, instead of just having a planer height limit, I mean, you get into what Dick was talking about, where you get a one-to-one ratio, you move in a foot, you can go up a foot higher, get into, like Denver has a bulk plane, so it's an angle, so at the edge of the properties, you've got lower heights, and then you, you know, peak and mass the structure up in the middle, so it doesn't feel so apparent.
Right, you can step down the ends of it.
Which is much more of a pedestrian-friendly feel, which is much important, but I think I'm trying to achieve it better last time. The thing that I think you learn from what this study, I think, was really good, is by doing the half-acre, you force, the good thing is you've got a lot of independent contractors, but I do a lot of work with those independent contractors, and you're forcing us, and we are going to get creative, figure out around it, and you're forcing the maximum development on that lot, and what's gonna happen because of just development economics on the road? So you're gonna, you're gonna force all of us to maximize.
And Stephen, explain that just a little bit, just because I am assuming what you're, what you're saying is that the, the base price for that lot, because it has a house on it, because it has a certain square footage, will be same no matter what, and so...
Exactly.
Okay.
And so, and you've got certain development costs upfront, just all the taps and all the stuff that go into the water and sewer and everything else that develop, you know, of that. And when you're forced into a half-acre, you can't spread that out, so you've got, you know, a high starting point, and it's very hard, but to put on the maximum square footage and the maximum height and go right up to every limit that you've got. And I, I think that Dick's point in here, that, you know, there's other ways to get this character that are harder to work around by not doing the parcel sizes, because as you noticed also, some of the things I wrote down is, is, you know, you talked a lot about open space last time, but for us, on the development side of things, the things that are, getting 25% open space is very, very easy. And what you found in the study is, the higher percentage of open space gave you the lowest aesthetic value, and exactly what you're not trying to gain, you know, by your parameters, and that's the biggest problem, Steve, with what you're doing to the building product. Because what happens is, is, you know, what Dick designed, you know, just throughout there, one through three, is exactly what happened in the 50s in Capitol Hill, you got the courtyard apartments, you had the same rate changes, and what you've got is block-square courtyard apartments that maxed out behind a limit, maxed out the density that could be put on there, all because, you know, they could amass, basically, they took mansion homes, which were about half-acre lots, and they did the same thing. So I've really got to be concerned about that, especially in this odd R5 section, you know? And, and that's the best-case scenario that anybody could ever pull off, and that is one in a million shot to be able to pull that off. And so, I'd be really careful. And I think, you know, what Dick stated right in here is thoughts. You can do this with design standards, other sort of ideas, brought up, you know, limitations of height, you know, how you went back and forth to neighboring buildings, and you've already got Nevada Place going in there, you've got to deal with, you know, transition zones, you know, for sure. So I think I'd really look at that, really look at the...
With the, with the half-acre, you're saying that maybe push your price point of those units so high, it would be out of marketplace?
Well, or you have to, you have to get the density up so high to make the economics work for a developer, that you get exactly what you don't want, you get basically a wave pedestrian-friendly feel. You know, and sometimes the flat roofs isn't such a bad thing, but what Dick is showing on here, the low-pitched roofs, that's not a historic look at all, and so you've got to be really careful. Main Street, all that, has a lot of flat roofs, you get basically facade architecture going on. You bake in a sloped or a hip or some sort of facade roof that is just like the old Main Streets, you know, where it was just built up and held up by two-by-fours, you know, that's what you're forcing. So you've got to be really careful what you're, you know, what you're going on. I think this test that he did is really good about what it shows, and, you know, and what you have to be careful with. I think what he also brought up, the curb cuts, you know, is a really key thing, and it's something developers really look at, and how much driveways, you can see what was good and what was bad with the tests. And I think that's something, you know, curb cuts and how much landscaping you have on it, and I think what you definitely don't want to do is what you talked about with the one driveway with the parking, you know, up in the front, because what you've done is push that pedestrian-friendly feel back 50 feet, and they have to walk through parking lot to get to your front doors, so you've got to be really careful about that also. So I, I think, you know, giving lot sizes, especially this parcel, is not the one to limit.
I'm gonna attempt to back up a bit, restate what got us into this. When we started talking about subareas of the R5, one of the things we got from the public feedback was, and our own observations, this is a viable neighborhood, a lot of single families, small one- and two-story houses, significant percentage of which have been remodeled, updated, expanded. It's, it's a viable neighborhood. Our question was, how do we allow development of somebody's property rights, properties there, while still protecting the viable houses, the living spaces, the, the character of the neighborhood that's there? Recognizing you plop a three-story, 12-unit apartment building right in the middle of a bunch of single-family houses, you've changed the character of the neighborhood. So that's what got us into this. The question in front of us now, based on Dick's study, is, is setting a lot or parcel limit the way to, to achieve what we're trying to achieve? Flexibility and redevelopment by protecting the character and the viability of those, those houses that some people evidently think are good places to live right now, isn't it?
Well, in some of the discussions we've had at previous meetings, is that we wanted to encourage single-family housing and keep development to a smaller scale, and discourage apartment buildings, and discourage consolidation of lots in general. So, I mean, I think, to me, that was part of our overall goal in what we wanted to include with the comp plan, or at least that's what I heard.
I mean, is that what most people are thinking? Because I think that's different than what we wrote down last time, my impression, but...
Actually, that's what we had talked about.
Okay. For the R5 area itself, maintain the single family?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean...
Maybe I talked about, but that was census.
Okay.
So the question is still the same, is limiting lot size accomplishing what we said, what we said at the meeting three weeks ago now, that we wanted to accomplish?
I guess I would say that part of our discussion, or at least in my mind, part of what we wanted to achieve was more variety instead of something quite as large as Nevada Place with, you know, similarity in style, particularly if you look at Alexa, and there's some variety in the facades, but the colors and the shapes are all the same. And keeping somebody from buying up that odd-shaped lot in the middle and having it look the same from all sides, I guess that's part of what I thought we were addressing also. I was thinking when I reviewed all this, particularly the test cases, is there's no way in the world that I could get to examine those on my own, but I can see smart when I, I know smart when I see it, and I think this is an invaluable study. And graphically, the different ways of assembling the lots, I think is quite helpful. But both from our guest architect from the Historic Preservation Board, for those that homeowners might not know, Steve Ekman, and from Dick Farley, I, I'm unclear as to what those design standards would be, but I hear the same thing from both of them, and I believe them, but I can't get to their, to that point and craft those on my own. I've built a lot of things that have been designed by people like this, and we've stood around on job sites and looked at each other and said, "Oh, yeah, it's easy on paper." But I would be interested to, I need some more of a, an outline of what you have in mind, and how it is that those design standards, if you apply it to the entire R5 district, every architect or developer comes in and says, "Well, here's what they're looking for, and we'll do about the same thing on this site as they did across the street and down one block." How do you get that variety that we were trying to achieve by limiting to a half-acre assembly so that it, it doesn't look cookie cutter, if you will? So...
Hey, open up comments?
Please do.
Just somebody who's been at all your meetings, and kind of listened to Dennis' comments, but let me, kind of, my reflections of what you discussed in November, is it was the, you liked the character of the area, but the preservation, the discussion I heard was, do you want it from a comp plan area to sort of try to freeze drive? Was it for you, for you to just say, the comp plan, it ought to stay the way it is, or it'd be the single family, got the bottom place, but nothing else happened? I heard a lot of discussions back and forth about, wait a minute, we're not sure that's what we want to do, the norm is particularly, wait a minute, we want to make sure that it's viable in investment. What I, I asked Dennis to put up there, as I was listening to Dick's, his test, which I agree with Steve, I, we wanted this reality check, you know, after you sort of sat in somewhat of an abstract way, debated, you know, the half-acre maximum, those kinds of things, this was kind of nuts and bolts to see how it would really work. The other one was that I was interested in, was the overlay of rental, remember, remember we went through and carved out all the owner versus rental? And I don't know if there's a way, I'm looking at this, is the green...
Green is non-owned or occupied, so it's a rental.
Non-owned or occupied. So for me, it would be another iteration of the testing, would be to look at Dick's feasibility test with the percentage of rental property that's still in there, because I think if you drive around the area, there are some, as, as commissioners have pointed out, very nice renovations in there, there are some other properties that could, that are probably somewhat mediocre, and, you know, I think that, what I heard the commissioner debating was, how do we kind of keep the character, but, but make sure it becomes an area that still attracts investment over time? Don't just kind of sterilize the area, that's me from the comp plan, Dick's policy, that's what we're struggling with. I think at least some majority of you have to decide, is it flexibility versus preservation? And are you concerned about perhaps sterilizing the area? But how do you get there with some flexible building? They've certainly just... I got it. But somehow, I think you have to come to the... Five of you, as Kirsten or Suzanne pointed out, to move ahead, comp plan, take recognition to the council. Five of you have to decide which way you want to go. I mean, that's kind of a big philosophical issue.
I think where we had started with this, at least from my standpoint, was looking at the development that's going on here and people that are living. How do you address two different people with whatever we're going to propose? The person who owns a single family house there and has spent tens of thousands of dollars remodeling and is now worried that we're suddenly going to have a couple of these dense townhouse units flanking him, what happens to the money he's invested in the property? On the other hand, what do you say to somebody who already owns two or three, any block up there of those rental properties with an eye on using it for income production now, but long-term, he kind of thought, you know, they're getting older, rather than continue to put money into them, he'd like to take advantage of the R5 zoning and put a set of townhouses on there. Now, under current, the way they're currently zoned, you need to take the interests of both that single family owner who's reinvested in his property and the property owner who's looking to develop the property that he owns within the standards, the guidelines that we've given him already. So how do you protect the two of them so that one doesn't push out the other? If that's, if you're going to keep the character of the neighborhood, but still allow for some evolution, then let's decide what it is we need to do to guide that or meter that evolution rather than have a three story apartment building pop up right next to a one story bungalow house that somebody's invested a lot of money in and a lot of emotion in, and suddenly he finds his investment going down the tubes and he has to sell out to somebody else. If we're not considering both of those people in this neighborhood, then we're not considering...
That was well said.
Where does it get us? That's really what's important. It isn't getting it said, it's, it's what do we then do to set the standards that are going to permit both the evolution and protection? Because we're not here to determine whether it's all going to stay single family or it's all going to go to R5, R5 densities throughout the area. We're here to try and maintain the, the, the character, the orderly evolution of that neighborhood as a distinct element within central area. At least that's what we said we were doing when we took up this question a couple meetings. So if lot size isn't going to do it, or isn't going to do it alone, what else do we need to do?
Do we have agreement that that's what we're looking for?
Yeah, let's get real clear on that because I, I think we, we don't have clarity at this point.
I thought we were all agreeing last time that what we don't want is another Nevada Place.
Yes.
We don't want that. What we do want then is something less. That's where I go.
Okay, well, that's, that's tightening up the envelope a little bit. So how do we get there? Half acre lots, do it. Counterproductive in terms of character is...
Well, maybe we should go through and kind of point by point here and just say, do we have five votes to move, or four votes at this point to say, maintain single family, don't maintain existing single family? Maintain existing character, don't maintain, you know, try to maintain character. Go through the different elements of this, see what we can agree on and what we can't agree on. Because I think it's going to be confusing for a long time if we don't. So we, is that fair?
That's probably as orderly a way of approaching it as any, Dennis, I don't think. It's still going to get us to the nuts and bolts of a statement within comp plan, but that's a starting...
If we go back to the goal that was on the first page of the agenda, which is maintain the small town characters unique to Littleton, in the parentheses, not to protect individual houses. How, is that what people think that the goal is, the primary goal? Do you show hands on that in terms of who thinks that is it? Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, okay.
Without the not to protect individual houses.
I'm not sure I understand what that means.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't vote on it. I don't know what it means.
Well, I think it gets into the point, I think that Jim heard too, was it didn't say that we're going to freeze it in place as a single family ever necessarily, that you're going to see some evolution. Whereas I think if, if we, otherwise, I think there can be confusion in terms of maintaining small town character, maintaining that character. I think that we've got to be fairly clear, are we saying we want this to be a historic district where everything's protected or is it not a historic district?
I don't think anybody even discussed the question.
No, it didn't, but I don't know how you, how you, you limit demolition and redevelopment otherwise.
I don't think you do. I don't think that's what we're talking about. We're talking character, not the means of getting there.
Is Linda, is that what you're saying? Or you're saying that you could, you could see houses being torn down and yet another single family put in its place, a new single family?
Well, I thought all we talked about is encouraging single family housing, so that leaves us a little bit of flexibility there.
So, so encouraging single family?
Encouraging single family housing.
How do you encourage single family housing?
Let's define single family. We're talking single family attached, single family detached.
And a townhouse would be a single family de- attached. So you've got individual door, individual yard, whereas a single family detached would be a single family house, basically what most of us live in.
Are we not talking about something fairly simple? If I walk out of here and walk through that neighborhood, it looks like a traditional residential neighborhood. It isn't like walking into the area east of Capitol Hill where it's one block apartment building after another block apartment building after another block. Is that, that sufficient distinction? That's really what we're talking about. I mean, residential is anything from a single family bungalow to a 12 story apartment building, but we're talking about the character of the neighborhood as it is now. I've walked through it, I know, I have a chance of knowing the neighbors, maybe not know all of them, but it's the character of the neighborhood as you walk through it now. Which means you can walk down a sidewalk and you don't have a driveway every 30 feet. Which means you have a tree lawn in, in what is small H historic, Steve, neighborhood for Norm. Not, not a, a neighborhood in a glass bottle, dramatically sealed, but the feel of a walkable neighborhood. That's what we said we wanted to protect. Not by freezing it in place, but by setting reasonable limits, reasonable guidelines for how it does develop because it will. A hundred years ago, nobody worried about having a two car garage, much less a three car garage. Right now, on a new property, a two car garage is a bare minimum. If it's a big house, no chance of selling it. 50 years from now, who knows? Especially in a residential area around downtown Littleton with a light rail station. So we're not here to say, this is what it's going to be. It's all going to be one story or two story single family housing. What we're saying is, we want to protect property, the rights of those property owners who've invested in those, that area, that have a livable neighborhood. So how do we do that?
Can we break that into elements and vote on it, just to make sure we're all saying that?
Well, just, just show of hands. Am I way off base or is that generally the kind of thing that we've been talking about trying to achieve? That was, that was two questions. Is that generally the thing we said we were trying to achieve?
Encourage walkability.
Just, just to state what I'm raising my hand on here, you know, I guess the way I'm understanding it, the way, and I think what you're saying, David, is the first paragraph in the desired character of the standard, design standards and guidelines, new development, whether residential or commercial mixed use, should continue the residential character as much as possible with roofs and so on. So it's not talking about single family residential uses, it's talking about resident That's what, that's my understanding.
Jim?
Just, I can't remember your, your vote. Uh, I didn't stick a minute, but I can, your vote to say, let's move forward with the half acre?
It was six to one. And it's institute a maximum lot size of 0.5 acres with no exceptions to the maximum height of 30 feet or the minimum open space of 25.
Lot size, height, open space. So what, what the staff did, what Dick did was go into a reality test of the three things that you voted on six to one after a somewhat philosophical, abstract, I mean, not exactly that, but I mean, you know, you were kind of in a philosophical, so six, six of you said, let's do this. Now you've actually had a chance to kick tires. Are you still, the six of you or five of you or four of you still think this is achieving what you voted on in November?
Linda?
Well, let me ask a question. Do you, do you ever see comp plans that have maximum lot size? I mean, do, that's not normally included in comp plans.
Typically not. I think what we're doing is, what we've been asked to do is look at the R5 specifically so that you get a little bit more direction. So, yeah, the thought was we need to kind of go around that at least. We may end up with a more general statement in the comp plan itself, but it'd be great to have that background in terms of very specific direction. So, and I don't, Jim, what's your thought in terms of that?
Well, I, I mean, you know, we need to kind of wordsmith this, but with, with the small size of it, and you, I think you've done a, your discussions, this R5 is different from every other R5 in the city. So from a area plan, you are trying to carve out something very different here than all the other R5.
And Jim, just to clarify, that's the point, we took the approach of not rezoning it to some special district, but...
Exactly, and that's why I'm saying, you, you are into a level of detail here that normally you would not be in a comp plan. But I think because of the uniqueness of this area, and this is just me having been here watching over the last 69 days, is that because of this small kind of entree, it has driven you to this level of specificity that normally you would not get to in a comp plan. Otherwise, I think where you were before, you know, you spent quite a bit of time that you were struggling, but if you stay kind of at the more generic abstract level typically of comp plan, and then if you look at our comp plan now, I think you came to some realization, many of you, that it wasn't really going to give the city council much specific advice if you stayed with that format. So I think you've kind of got, Linda, in my judgment, because of this very small, unique area, you are, you are moving and have gone toward more specificity than you normally would in a comp plan. But if you go back to the workshop that you had with council last fall, I think this level of specificity is what they were asking you to do.
And Linda, other situations where we've had, you know, this kind of issue with this, needs this kind of direction, I've seen comp plans actually get into them too, yeah. I think when it's specific, this is the central area comp plan, so it's really dealing with, you know, the downtown itself. And so it, it gets a little higher level of specificity than we were talking, you know, citywide.
So I, I applaud you for it and I applaud you for being willing to sit down, Dick, and look at this. This is, I think, a great test of going from just abstract wording to real life, what's it called? But if you come to some consensus on whether the, what you voted on last time, is it, is this what you thought you were getting? Does it get through what you thought you should be?
Sort of specifically to answer what you just brought up, with this testing, I would concede that the lot size of a half acre and the height limitation give us basically a bunch of cubes, whether they be apartments or townhomes. And down in the vicinity of the Denver Country Club, you see that and you see those single lots with an old bungalow between two, three story apartment buildings. I do a lot of work in one of those apartment buildings. And, so that's not where we want to go. So I, with what we've seen tonight, would change my vote based on those two factors. Regarding the specificity, as Linda said, you know, or asked and Dennis replied, we don't usually get that detailed, but if we're going to go the direction of design guidelines, that seems to be even more specific and, and more involved to be putting into a comp plan.
Although I think you can talk about the areas that Dick has mentioned, you know, you can talk about, we want to address the length of the building, we want to address the separation of the buildings, we want to talk about the pitch of the roof, and that kind of stuff we can just reinforce and just say, here's what we, here's our goal and, you know, here's what the design guidelines they do, rather than writing the design guidelines themselves, yeah.
So we've got currently from this notebook, the Littleton Downtown Design Standards and Guidelines.
Right.
We have this section through the north, northwest residential, which is, I don't know, 20 pages or so. Could we then perhaps in the line of another, I'll put this in the form of a motion, would the board, I'll move that the, that we request an analysis of those particular areas drawn from what's already been adopted and have that presentation to the board with the thought that we would adopt that into the comp plan, not the entire set of guidelines that exist? Did I ramble too much on that motion?
I mean, I think we can take some components right now from the design guidelines and incorporate it into...
Let's, let's answer Norm's question. Was, was that specific enough for a second or were we too rambling?
I'm moving that we request an extraction of the most important parts as judged by Dick Farley and Dennis perhaps to get us to a point that maintains existing character. I'm still, I'm struggling.
Let's, let me try and get at what you're talking about. We are, I think, all in agreement that the goal of maintaining the small town character of that R5 area as a special area within central area is our goal, right? No more than one or two shaking heads?
I'm going to chime in. I guess, to me, there's a discrepancy or disparity of what you just said. I have a problem with U R5, one, and I have a problem with the concept of a small town character. To me, they're not inclusive. I've been having trouble with that all night long. No, it's, it's not consistent. You know, we have different people say it in different ways, you know, that this is a special R5. Well, that's telling me something. It's not an R5.
Yeah.
Okay? It's not, and I'm tired of calling it something that's not.
Okay, let's, let's take, let's look at it this way. For the moment, let's set aside the R5 aspect, as, just as we would zoning or the design standards and guidelines. And what we're talking about is what we're trying to accomplish based on public feedback we had in general and from the neighborhood in particular and our own observations. What we've said is, this is a substantial enough area of relatively smaller scale housing, viable neighborhood, that is worth protecting. Question is, as Norm suggested, how do we go about protecting? How do we go about defining what it is we're trying to protect? We trying to protect the tree lawns and tree lined streets? We trying to protect the walkable sidewalks without driveways every 30 feet? We try, are we trying to protect the relatively small, this guy's in trouble last time, but I'll try it anyway, small scale enassing of the buildings that we're seeing along there? Nothing huge and imposing, nothing towering over its neighbors, nothing crowding on, on the street? If that's what we're trying to protect, if that's what we were hearing from the public, we should be trying to protect. How do we best go about it? Is it with lot size or is it with design standards or is it something in between that we can put down in short succinct form that a current homeowner, prospective buyer, or a developer, or a lender would understand on looking at it without having to get two lawyers and 20 hours of consultation time in to understand what they're being asked to do?
Before you go any further, I want to withdraw my motion because it never worked out. And before there's a second, I want it off the floor, so have at it.
So let me ask the question, that question. Is, is what I talked about, the tree lined streets, the, the continuous sidewalk box without all the driveways, the parking lots and the big high frontages, is that what we're talking about, Jim?
I would like to state that what you just outlined is a great goal to accomplish for a given area without putting a title. I like that concept a little bit more than what I've been hearing thus far.
Well, isn't it an amazing coincidence because we're talking about a comp?
I would rather be talking about a comp, but...
But I thought we were talking...
That's what I thought so too, but not in my experience.
The design guidelines refer to it as northwest residential, if that makes more sense. I'm good with that. And the things that you just listed are basically one through four underneath the goal. Size of structures, which includes length of individual structures along the street and height, percentage of a site that is unstructured open space, which we took a run at before and didn't seem to be problematic. And then two questions include the number and length of curb cuts. I think we've agreed that can be a problem. And include provisions for tree lawns and sidewalks, which you just mentioned. So there's four items there under that goal, that, uh, what we want to do.
At least those are characteristics that start to describe a goal, as you would talk, describe some, a person is tall or short, heavy or light, dark or fair. At least it's trying to give some definition. Tom? Which kind of was a nice segue into what my next question was going to be, is devil's advocate. So if that's what we were saying we were, we're looking for, or the neighborhood was looking for, and it's existing character, how did Nevada Place come along? What, what was ignored in Nevada Place with the group?
Everything.
Sorry?
Everything.
Specifically, what was ignored?
I'm telling you, everything. We just really ignored everything. We ignored the comp plan. We, we decided that we had a, we had somebody that, this is, we, we looked at it as a, as a singleton type of situation. We really didn't take it into account the effects of that to the neighborhood. And I, since I just drove it again, and again, and again lately, and I'm seeing that Nevada Place go up.
But it's within, it's within the density that's, that's providing more.
And that's exactly it. We were, we, well, that's my whole problem with the R5. I rest my case. You just said it.
Okay, what exceptions?
I don't want, and I don't want to see another Nevada Place.
This was a P D O, right?
Right.
So the density was within allowable.
And then it followed the design guidelines.
And even below allowable.
Right.
So what, what was exceeded with, you know, and what did the P D O give to the city and the neighborhood?
It's a greater height than would be allowed in the base zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, the setbacks weren't, yeah, everything else, I think.
So in every other way, the current zoning was complied with. P D O did not exceed.
Correct.
Right. Right. But, but Julio, you said everything. You said nothing was.
Oh, we're, we're, we allow, because we, let me put it this way. That's my problem with the R5. It's allowing for Nevada Places to occur. And yet, we're talking now that we want to maintain a small town character. To me, that's not a small town character. I'm trying to say that we have, as long as you follow the R5, you could have a bunch of them. And yet, we've been discussing that we don't want to see that anymore.
But Julio, let me, let me intervene here because you still have, Dennis asked you, I mean, if you say to take the R5 with a small town character, you said, you want a comp plan to say the area is going to be preserved. Is that, is the five of you want to say, we want it, we don't want it to, anything else here except single family?
I would rather start with that than I would with a lot of those.
But I mean, I think that's, but I, I haven't heard five of you that said that's what we want to do. And I've heard you articulate that you're very strongly there. But in, in all the discussions, I've not heard five of the commissioners that say, we buy into that, and that's what we want, want to recommend to the city council.
That's why we vote.
You're going to vote, that's how you're going to vote.
Correct.
You're going to say, that's what I want, I want, I don't want any more things here except single family.
Can I make a motion?
There are other, there are other factors here that we have talked about in these discussions, that we can't just push off beside them. It isn't just single family or Nevada. We already have duplexes in there, so.
But I'm, I'm taking a position here of articulating what I've heard over the last sixty to ninety days, the position that Julio has said. He doesn't like the R5, he doesn't think it gets you to the.
And I think it's become plain now with this discussion, the last minutes, why he doesn't like it. We took the position a couple of meetings ago that we, if we went with the smaller parcel, that we could prevent, prevent more Nevada Place condos, developments from coming in. By doing, by restricting what could be done through the P D O process. What he, what we've just demonstrated is, P D O process worked just fine. The only exception that was made was on the height. So that is not an adequate approach.
It worked fine, it didn't work fine for P D O.
Right.
That's all I'm.
No, I'm saying if that was the approach, when we talked about lot size and height limitations and not allowing any, any reduction or increases for a larger open space, we did that with the assumption that we would then be able to limit the kind of development that produced Nevada Place through a future P D O. What we've just had demonstrated to us is, that's not true. So, the other, the advantage of the R5 that we've all conceded is, it does allow for minor non-residential, low volume, low traffic, low impact uses within that zone. Being close to downtown, I don't think anybody had any big objection to that, especially since we found out we only had two or three of them already anyway. So what we were trying to do was to say, look, we've got a decent neighborhood there, relatively smaller scale. It's walkable, it's close to downtown, it does have some of these medical office uses. That seems to be perfectly cohesive for everybody who's living there. What do we do to protect that and not have spot, large-scale development like Nevada Place come in and very quickly make that neighborhood as an entire unit no longer viable?
I agree. And I, so I think you're still backing, but what I wanted to do was, fine for the record, because every time you get into this, and I've known Julio a long time, but he says, whatever you guys want to say, I don't like R5.
Can I make a motion?
And I think it seems.
Please do.
Um, based on what Craig was saying and Norm was saying, that, um, following the design guidelines and saying that a goal is new development, whether residential or commercial slash mixed use, should continue the residential character as much as possible, and.
Second? Let's, let's get a second.
Why would you even make a motion on that when it's already been, it's already there in black and white? I mean, all you're doing is reiterating something that we already know about.
It's in the design guidelines, it's not in.
Yeah.
And see, and I guess I'm not ready personally to, to adopt any part of the design guidelines until we know where in the hell we're going.
I don't think she's saying atop part of the design guidelines. I think she's looking for a statement of intent, goal.
Well, if you want to go and rephrase that and say that's a goal for the comp plan, I might agree with you.
That would be a goal for the comp.
And I'll second that.
Just, just because it's arbitrary, the way you presented it initially, I had a problem.
Okay, let's, let's remember, we are here trying to develop the comp plan. Maybe a small section at the moment on the table, but that's what we're here for. We're not here to endorse something else, design review guidelines, no offense to Dick, or, or anything else. That's what we're here for, is comp plan.
We're not there yet for the design guidelines.
We'll get there.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Linda, where is that language? I'm sorry.
It's four dot one dot two.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha, okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Thank you.
The first sentence in four, one, two.
Discussion.
I think it's appropriate as a goal in the comp plan.
I agree. Other discussion, other consideration. All the question. Anybody need to have it repeated? Just that one sentence.
It's, uh, new development, whether residential or commercial slash mixed use, should continue the residential character as much as possible.
All the question. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign.
Can I make another motion?
Hour and forty-five minutes.
It's scary, please.
Okay, now, my question is. It is R5. It does have higher density than perhaps we would like to see, whether it's four of us, five of us, or three of us. Are there other considerations? Are there other factors that we need to, to consider within comp plan, whether as a policy supporting that goal, or as a separate goal, to reinforce that? Do we need to talk about frequency of curb? Need to talk about amassing of buildings?
Did you switch gears?
No, I didn't switch gears. I'm saying, is there something else we need to reinforce? That's a goal. A goal in the, in the context of comp plan.
You started, started off with R5. And I've already made it really clear, anything dealing with R5, I will vote against.
Okay, well, you can't vote against it because it's already in place, so.
Well, I can vote against it because, because of the fact that I'm telling you that this particular area, in my opinion, the only part of R5 that I personally deem that's appropriate for this area is where we allow for the office or whatever the type of commercial venue to.
Only allows for medical and dental.
And I'm going to hazard a guess that we all agree with that.
Period.
Wait, is everybody agree with that? Is that the only factor, a part of R5, or the main factor in R5 that we agree with? Norm?
I'd like to hear Linda's next motion.
Oh, you're already ready with another motion?
I believe she is.
Oh, this is based on what I've heard from, from Dave, your conversation, and Julio's, and, um, basically four components, and I don't know how to word this, but I've heard we want to protect the tree lines, um, and protect the walkability of that neighborhood, minimize curb lines, and.
Curb cuts?
Curb cuts, sorry, and small scale, and small scale buildings. I don't know if I want to include that. I mean, we talked about four different components. Pardon?
Grass lawns.
Grass lawns, open space, I don't know, can we do that?
As a goal for the comp plan, or?
Goals, separate, goals.
Separate goals, or something reinforcing the goal that we just approved?
Either or. So tree line walkability, small scale buildings, and minimize curbs, curb cuts.
Okay, is there a second to that?
A second.
Okay, so now we can discuss it. My first question is going to be, just as, just for the sake of argument. That's pretty generic.
Totally.
Okay. So what, what does it mean, minimizing curb cuts? I'm a developer, I want to get as many driveways in there as I can. Well, I could probably squeeze eight in, but hey, I'll minimize seven. So, relative terms aren't going to help us, relative terms aren't going to help future design review committees, they aren't going to help staff. We need to be specific.
But do we agree that these are components that need to be included in the comp?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have agreement on the concept at least, and then we go to specifics.
Let's discuss it from this team.
Should we take it one at a time? No, all together?
Well, we've got a motion on the table. Let's, let's talk about the whole concept of how specific we'd be in order to accomplish the end, the goal, that we've already said unanimously that we want to incorporate in comp plan for this part of the city. Tom, yes?
How specific do we need to get to be able to keep the neighborhood in the character that we would like to keep it?
I think we're getting there. I think with the first goal that we just voted on, possibly this one, and a number of others, we'll get there. It's, it's, this is only one of many steps to get.
Thank you.
To a certain extent, it's arbitrary.
It's limited in its own framework, but when you put it upon the entire puzzle, it creates the picture.
Other comments?
Not hearing anything pro or con at this point, much less how do we get the details? How do we get the details? I'd like to get some discussion, not just.
We don't get any discussion, well, let's, we've got thirty seconds, let's go with.
I think we need to discuss the number of curb cuts. I don't know how to control it, but we spoke briefly. If three lots with single family houses each had a driveway, you've got that number of curb cuts. If it's assembled and you have six or eight townhomes on that same area, and each one has a drive, then you basically have, I think, six set of puddle of concrete in front. So it is a factor that needs to be regulated for the walkability of the neighborhood. And I think that's addressed in the motion, but I don't know how we get there, perhaps in further design guidelines.
If it's that complicated, cut it up. Because we're not going to deal with it or figure it out tonight, because we don't even know what we're talking about. The, you know, one, we're talking about it being a, a small town character. I'm not so sure I'm buying from my standpoint, as Jim has pointed out, that I'm very adamant about it, and I am. I'm not in a position where I want to see. I mean, Dick Farley made a great.
Exactly.
Testimonial with all of these examples of why I don't want to see that kind of housing in this area.
But I do.
You tell me that in C A, I'm all for it. But here, no.
I do think Linda's goal, though, she's talking about elements that'd be good to have at least that level. We agree with these things, we can get to details in the design guidelines, we'll get to them later. But at least you give that kind of direction if you agree with it.
If it's going to create, Norm's got a discussion item with it, that means he's uncertain about it. My comment is, why belabor the point to say that you're going to have, you know, every ten feet, or every hundred feet, or whatever, or curb cut? I don't want to discuss it. I think it's kind of crazy because we don't know what the amount of density we're really going to talk about, because we haven't talked about.
I, I guess you could go ahead and you could talk more specifics for some of these and others, just leave them general. I think the ones that we need for zoning, we're giving direction to zoning, is we need height, we need setbacks.
Do that later, that part of it, that's why I don't want to talk about it now. I'm still thinking about the comp plan. I'm sorry, that's what I'm here for.
Sure, but.
And, and I think those are important issues, but I think it's way too much detail for this sort of goal and this policy level that we're talking about. I would just like to sort of restate Linda's motion, the way I understand it, and maybe it's a little clearer, and we could stick with the motion, or we can change it, whatever. But what I would suggest is that we preserve and enhance the walkable character and residential scale of the street with detached sidewalks, regularly spaced, regularly spaced street trees, and minimal curb cuts. Is that what, is that what you were trying to say, or am I missing?
You want to repeat that one more time?
Is it close enough to what you had that we could just?
I think so.
I'll read it again, for Dennis to say. Uh, preserve, preserve and enhance the walkable character and residential scale of the streets with detached sidewalks, regularly spaced street trees, and minimum curb cuts.
I would be okay with that with the second also.
And I like the residential scale.
All I'm going to point out is, admirable vision supports what we said before. We don't want to get into the details of how far apart the curb cuts should be, how deep the tree, how big the mass. You can deal with it now, or you can deal with it with the next P D O that comes in for that area. One way or another, you're going to have to deal with the details, like it or not. If you want to set a reasonable range rather than an exact number, that's fine. That may be the right way to go. But all we're doing is postponing the inevitable debate, which is kind of what got us into some of the recent debates we've had in the last four years on P D Os that came in. And the, the standards were vague, and therefore they've made a case for, this is a good thing, it's consistent with comp plan. My, my view.
Can the design guidelines be tight to accommodate those instead of keeping it in comp plan?
David, can I make a comment?
Sure, yeah.
And, and this is having been here, gone through lots of many discussions about comp plan and, and the journey that you, commissioners, and I think, as I've involved myself in it, this, you've got a real mismatch here, a real disconnect between the scale of this area and what normally, if you look at comp plans, they normally are, be sort of looking at it from the big picture, the big puzzle, the big, you know, thirty thousand foot level and all of this kind of stuff. What you have here is a maybe ten to fifteen acre area that has, you talked about this sort of, some sort of progressive evolution. So there, there is a disconnect, and, 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 you know, Julio's been steeped, is, is a trained planner, so he's used to sort of the textbook, this is what comp plan is, and you don't go to this level. You've really kind of got an unusual thing here, where you've got a very small area that, quite frankly, even from a planning point of view, is very difficult. I mean, to try to project this. And so we're, we've got this clumsiness. And so we're, we've got this clumsiness and we may need to, and I was just talking, had, had doing a sidebar with Dennis because what, what I see you struggling with and what we've struggled with is what, if it's supposed to be comp plan, but how do you come up with something that's so generalized? And, and so big picture that it, it doesn't give any direction for the next PDO. And, and to me, it's a, there's a disconnect. I, I don't know the answer, but I think that we need some time to think about it and maybe come back and give you, because I, you've really worked hard, the commissioners, you've really worked hard over about the last ninety to hundred and twenty days on this. And this is not easy. I mean, you know, if you were just starting with a blank palette, you'd come in and just say, the whole thing would be a holding zone, a PDR. And then we're gonna develop standards or we develop these standards. In my, I've been through lots of comp plan exercises and trying to force fit this, what you're trying to do is force fit this into a comp plan. And I think that you're, you're struggling with, how do you, do you say something, you're gonna just say, five of us go to the city council and say, we want to preserve the small town character. Well, then what do they do with the next rezone application that comes in? Or you, what do you do with the next PDO? So I think we need maybe, maybe work with Dick, maybe it's something that talks about, gives general guidelines of what that character is. Maybe, maybe, maybe refers to design, I don't know. But you're in a dilemma and it's one I, thinking more about this, I can understand completely why you're there. So I don't know if, unless, unless commissioner members want to vote on a specific recommendation tonight, other than that, you know, I think I'd like to have staff maybe come back and give you a couple of questions.
I don't agree with that.
I didn't anticipate you would.
No, and the reason's quite simple. One, you don't just have eighteen acres, you have more than that. You have the entire CA area and you have the entire downtown that we're looking at. And this is not in and of itself an island. It is a part of the central area. It is part of the downtown, but it's not the entire thing. You guys have filleted or trying to fillet this R five area into something. You want to talk about putting a round, something that's square into a round hole, that's what, that's what it comes across. I think at this point in time, you know, if you really want to go and put all this other stuff and more growth and more development, that's what we heard from the representatives from downtown Littleton and along that area that they wanted to see. So give it to them, if they want to go and, I mean, we have already done that along, we have already done that along Prince Street where just this last go around, we did it for the senior housing. We did a three story farther down that way. We've already enlightened all that stuff. Why are you trying to fillet this particular area, I'm not sure. And I, and I guess I'm trying to figure that out.
Well, because it got carved out.
Cut it up, cut it up.
Cut it up?
Cut it up.
He's trying to cut it up.
Well, that's the impression I'm getting. One, you've got an R five to me for this particular area that's obsolete.
Obsolete?
In the sense that we, it allowed us to create Nevada Place when now that we're coming back, not more than a year or so after the fact, and say, we don't want to see another one. Now, in my ears and my brain telling me that that's not a true statement, did I not hear that from this group? Well, if I did, then we have a problem with the R five. So if you don't want to see any more Nevada Places, you have to eliminate it. Because you're gonna, otherwise, the next group of people are gonna come in with a PDO, we could get another Nevada Place. And guess what? Because it's there and because of the fact we don't have any grounds to deny it, it gets approved.
But Julio, hasn't that been the whole discussion in terms of what do we not like about Nevada Place?
No.
And how do we try and?
No, I'm telling you the things that we don't like about R five. We just haven't, we just haven't had the guts to say that.
Well, can we vote on the motion that's on the table?
Well, the question though is, you keep arguing R, the, the, what do you say in the comp plan? If you don't, what did you say in the comp plan, eliminate the R five?
Yeah.
That's the comp plan?
That would be my recommendation.
And then, and then, all right, and then what?
What's the rest of the comp, as, as?
The rest of the.
Paul Harvey used to say, what's the rest of the story? Eliminate R five and then as comp plan.
Well, and, and, and you know something? If you want to spend the time as staff to figure out what the other would be, spend the staff time to do it. And we'll be more than happy to hear about it. My comment, if you want us to do it, if you want us to do it.
And then?
Then let us have the time to do it. Don't distract us by having more sideline input so that we get more confused. I think that's what's been going on. I'm disappointed.
Let me ask you a question. Is there any way for another Nevada Place to come across, come to us?
Realistically?
Without putting together, together several parcels?
No.
This was a unique situation because of St. Mary's.
You had the school.
So you're not gonna see another Nevada Place scale development unless somebody puts lots together and comes in for a PDO approval, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we may in fact want to talk about, do we want, should this area be R five? Or is there a way of retaining the small medical dental mixed use within this area, which nobody in the area seems to be having objection? But for the moment, what we're saying is, we have a situation where nobody is gonna come in and put in a Nevada Place condo development without putting parcels together and coming in with a PDO. At which point, we have resort to the comp plan in whatever, whatever its current iteration to say what we will allow as being within character and intent of comp plan. Right?
And, and that's gonna be my recommendation to you. Obviously, I'm at a hundred and eighty degrees.
And that was, that was the argument we used when we took the vote we did three weeks ago.
Right.
So it's, it's consistent with intent. This presentation explained to us that it may not necessarily deliver on that intent.
And you guys are volunteers, like, we, we both work for the city council. My recommendation to you is get some product to the city council and see if they, if that's what they like. I think you've made a lot of sweat here. You know, Julio is, is very clear about where he is, but I think you've really attacked, uh, uh, made a very diligent effort to try to deal with a very difficult small sub area here. And if we can find a way that it sort of meets this intent, I think you'll have a very good product.
Do is look for some direction in comp plan. Julio's pointed out a big, this is an R five zone that current thinking says shouldn't be an R five. Steve?
Can we call the questions that's on the table so that we can move on?
Would you mind repeating the motions, because it seems like?
Okay. This is a, a goal for the comp plan, preserve and enhance walkable, the walkable character and residential scale of the streets with detached sidewalks and regularly spaced street trees minimizing curb cuts.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, no. So consistent in support of previous, may have to develop more detail on it. Obviously, we're not gonna do that this program here. We may in fact, as we've said before, when we come up with a finished comp, be recommending to city council that along with the new comp plan, there be revisions made in zoning. Matt? Sign review standards and guidelines.
Correct.
I would, I, I would like to make a comment. I'm hearing people saying, you know, Julio thinks this and Julio thinks that. I agree with Julio on the zoning is incorrect on that area.
Can we make a motion to that effect?
You can, we can make a motion, I don't know what the effect is gonna be at this point.
I think that goes to.
It's a position.
I think that goes to what Jim said is, okay, you don't like that, therefore what? What's the rest of the story? And before I would say, let's wipe out what we have, what is it that you are going to craft to, to replace that? Are you going to rezone it? Are you going to do something with design guidelines?
A motion from us, a motion from us isn't gonna wipe out there. We can express our opinion based on the discussion, where we're headed.
I'd like to see, you know, what's the alternative?
Right.
Say we don't like this, what do we like?
Would anybody disagree at this point that it's apparent from our discussion, motion we had here tonight
that it increasingly appears that R five is not a zoning consistent with the direction we're taking with the comp plan? It's not saying wipe it out until we know what's replacing it. But wouldn't you agree that it's no longer sounds as if it's consistent? That's where we're going with it.
But the R five allows some things that you can't do in another zone.
Right.
Right? This is the medical office building, so how do we take out the R five and leave that in?
That's the only pro I've heard.
We're in a new zone.
New zoning in R five.
New zone district.
R Julio.
Yeah, R Julio.
Okay, I don't, I don't know that we need to beat it, I think we're all in agreement that, look, there's something that isn't quite right here. We need to find an alternative to correct the city. So that it is consistent with the direction we're taking, putting the whole central area in comp plan.
And I don't have a problem if we decide that we're gonna go and create the what if. I don't have an issue with that at all. In fact, first, I'd like to know that we're not crazy about the R five. If that's, if that's something that's a, that's agreeable to everybody, that's a starting point. That's something we haven't even started to talk about since the last hundred and twenty-five days.
We tried to avoid this whole problem at the last meeting by saying, we won't deal with it as a zoning issue, we'll deal with it on the PDO basis. What we learned tonight is, that's not adequate, not.
So, so does anybody support the R five?
I, I would second a motion from Julio that says, we're not crazy about the R five.
And it needs to be modified and possibly changed.
Sense of the commission.
Yeah.
Sense of the commission.
Second.
Okay, straw poll, straw, straw second.
They're all straw polls, straw as you tell.
Well, they are, until we come up with something in black and white that we're putting out there for public review and city consideration, it is all straw.
So do you have any alternative ideas that we could do?
Yeah, my alternative ideas were to go back and look at the R five, take, gut it, see what we like about it and then, and see what we don't. I mean, it's very, very simply.
Is that what we've been doing though? I think because we went through, we looked at the height, we looked at the setbacks.
We did, and guess what? Did we come to any conclusions?
No, we're getting there.
Oh, there you go, I'm trying to get to a conclusion.
Conclusion I'm hearing is, there are certain facets striking, there is a certain facet of the R five zone that appears to be consistent with this vision that we're seeing with this R five area in central. We need to find now with staff and council a way of curbing that without buying in, bringing along with it a lot of the negative impacts, a kind of density, fogging that comes along with the R five. In general, that a reasonable statement of where, where our sense is. So we just have to come up with details of what we have to change. Not gonna do that.
Right, it'd be good, first of all, to start with what you don't like about the R five. Really detail that, go through the elements of the R five and then what's the more appropriate, you know, description, what, what the zone district should be. Whether it's in the zoning or, or the PDO or the design guidelines, wherever it is. You know, you need to know what you like and what do you want to change, so, and what do you want to change it to?
And I personally would like to address that two of the commissioners volunteered to work together to come up with a proposed alternative to that district, that part of the city, to the R five, R M for mix, R Julio, Norm for mix, which is that particular concept. As an alternative, this is at, at least a starting point, consistent with the direction we're taking with comp plan for the central area, this significant residential area. Come up with an alternative that we can consider and anchor with in order to present to council. So I'm looking for a couple of hands to come back the next meeting with some, at least a draft of how we might go about.
Which is Monday.
Which is Monday.
Oh.
Oh.
I would just like to make a comment.
Great, great racist hand, there's one volunteer.
I'd like to make the comment.
I'll do it.
If we, if we look at changing, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we look at changing that to another zoning, we're possibly taking some property.
No, sir.
That is something to keep in mind, we will have to deal with it.
There's, there's a procedure to do that, so you're not taking property rights, called due process.
There is a discussion that will ensue based on whatever draft.
Not to mention that.
Presumably Susan and Jim can help us through the ramifications of that.
So Craig and Julio will?
So with the, with the consent of the rest of the commission, Craig and Julio, we're gonna try and draft an alternative for that area consistent with what we got tonight.
And also addressing uses, is medical and dental appropriate, et cetera?
I, I think Craig and Julio volunteered to come up with a draft alternative. We'll see what, how creative they can be. Okay, that's only half the agenda, but it's not perfect. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to a hearing.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
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 At the next meeting, can we talk about the plan and the process and what we have to do, when we have to present to city council?
Two meetings back and didn't get any place. We have to, or we're gonna find ourselves in margin with something presented to council and then council say, great, where are you gonna go from here?
By the way, Dennis, I was not here on December the fourteenth.
Right.
So I don't know who the seventh were.
Oh.
It was a vote.
Craig.
Okay, sorry.
And I was actually sitting in your chair.
That's fine. It's okay with me, I just, I just know it wasn't me, so.
It wasn't you, no, you weren't here. We have, we have an alternative.
One.
One? We have one alternative.